Okay, we'll wait a few minutes here.
Yes.
I don't know which clock is correct. Give it a couple of seconds. All right, I'd like to call the Half Moon Township meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This evening's meeting is being recorded live on CNET and YouTube, CNET's YouTube channel. You may also view the program locally at www.cnet1.org. The township is asking for residents' email addresses for important updates and notices. If you'd like to sign up for something, go on the Half Moon Township website and give us a notification. And volunteers are needed for open positions on various committees and boards. If you're interested in volunteering, please visit the township website or contact Amy Smith. All right, first thing on the agenda tonight is Resolution 2022-14, meeting rules and regulations presented by Ron Servello.
Okay, I'm sure this was posted on the website, is that correct? The resolution's on the website, so everybody should have an opportunity to read it. And I just thought I would just cover a few points briefly tonight, and then we can move on. This was a resolution that was adopted on the 24th of March. It's rules of conduct for public meetings. And I just wanted to cover a couple of the main points. There's, with citizens' comments, there's typically a maximum of five minutes for each person to provide their comments, questions, concerns, what have you. There are times, there may be times, where if there's a large group of people wanting to speak, and that's really dependent on the sign-in sheet, that's the only way we really know, that there are cases where we might have to shorten that to maybe four or three minutes, depending on the amount of people that want to speak. But we have to gauge that for each meeting. But as it stands, it's five minutes a person. So I wanted to point that out. When we do that, there has to be somebody designated as a timekeeper. Someone keeps track of the time each person speaks, so that everybody gets a fair shot at it. And that, you know, that's really important. And so if somebody's using a countdown clock or using their watch, you're going to see someone doing that, and that can be the secretary. It might be the vice chair or some other member of the board. The sign-in form, that provides name, address, and indicate whether the matter is an agenda item or a non-agenda item. So both agenda items and non-agenda items will be covered during a citizen's comment period, which typically occurs at the beginning of the meetings. Let's see. And when someone wants to speak, they need to indicate so. The chair will recognize them, they'll come up to the table and give their comments or whatever they want to say during that period of time. Let's see. But it's important that we maintain the decorum and that when a person wants to speak, they're not speaking from the audience, they're not cross-discussion. That tends to become disruptive to the people wanting to listen. And mutual respect and decorum is something that's important for both us as well as the residents that are attending. And of course, the citizens can always request something be placed on the agenda for discussion at the appropriate time and sufficient notice. And it, you know, we're trying, we generally follow Robert's Rules of Order, although where Robert's Rules of Order is a guideline rather than a rule or requirement, it's certainly a guideline, and we try to, we should try to stick with that as much as we can. We got to, you know, and civil, and civil behavior on both sides and maintain our decorum. And hopefully, we can have a civil, conscious, and constructive dialogue. So that's really what I wanted to say. I turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ron. Okay. Next up is citizens' comments. Is there anybody out there who would like to add anything, contribute? Going once, going twice?
Mr. Chair, excuse me. I was in a text message discussion with some folks who wanted to bring up the fact that Half Moon, I don't have the materials, she was supposed to forward them to me, but for lack of better terms, Half Moon Township Cleanup Day through Clearwater Conservancy is going to take place next Saturday. There is a link, again, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared, but I wanted to mention it, that I can get out through social media, that you can sign up, and it's to pick up along the road sides, that kind of thing throughout the township, the 23rd, next Saturday, not in two days. I will get that information and I'll forward it on, so.
Amy, is that possible, we can get that on the website, or?
Yeah, I'll follow up with that, Amy, I'll have to get the link and everything.
Okay.
But yeah, there was a little confusion, I thought somebody might be coming to present about it, and then I also asked for the materials, but I didn't get them, so.
And that's, that's the 23rd of April?
Yeah.
Okay.
Day before my birthday. Clean up the township for my birthday.
There you go. Keep Half Moon beautiful.
Mm-hmm. When's the hazardous waste recycling, when does that occur? Is that in May?
I'm not sure.
I just heard that advertised. But that's-
It's April 28th and 9th at the transfer center, is that the one you're talking about?
Yep.
Oh, that's household hazardous waste. I think he's talking about the Half Moon riffraff days.
Well, no, household hazardous waste is what I had in mind.
Oh, and that is that those-
Because I know it's usually in late April, somewhere between late April and May, and that's important. That's one opportunity a year.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, citizens' comments, supervisor comments. All right, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Mr. Servello moves to approve the agenda, do I hear a second?
A second.
Another second, Mr. Beck. Any discussion? Hearing none, motion to approve, the motion is a second, or vote to approve the motion is a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
Dave, can you wait a minute?
Sure.
People are saying that they can't hear us.
I'm going to check on the audio here.
We should be okay now.
Okay. The agenda's approved, subdivision land development plans conditional uses, the Weaver replot of tax parcel 17004-33 and 17004-33B, plan number 2105 expires May 15th, 2022. We have a 90-day time extension from the developer dated April 5th, 2022. If accepted, the plan would then expire on August 13th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to receive the time extension?
So this time extension is, we're supportive, I mean, who asked for this in the first place?
A developer would ask for the time extension.
I have no objections, huh?
That's, that's the Weaver replot.
Yeah, okay.
I see there's an involved person out there, you got anything you want to add to that, or?
Well, it's not a developer, I mean, we're not developing.
I know you're not developing, but-
It's just that, it's from the survey.
It's a replot.
Yep.
They're just moving online.
Yep.
Okay, do I hear a motion, or Bob, did you move?
Yeah, I'll, I'll-
Okay, Bob made a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Ron seconded. All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. So I guess August 13th, I would expect will be done with the plan long before that, I think. All right, next up, approval of the minutes for March 24th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'm going to approve the minutes.
Ron made a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Chuck seconded. A motion and a second, is there any comments by the board, corrections? Everything look good? All right, we'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved for March 24th, 2022. Thank you. Consent agenda. On the consent agenda, there's a motion to approve the bills list for 319 through 48, 2022, general fund in the amount of $45,032.74, fire protection fund in the amount of $7,194.16, open space fund in the amount of $219, and the state highway liquid fuel fund in the amount of $920.80 to acknowledge the resignation of Frank Kishvari from the Board of Auditors, to acknowledge the Marshall Maring resignation from the Open Space Five-Year Review Board and Committee, to acknowledge the retirement compensation adjustment memo, and acknowledge the Zong double assessment refund. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd, I'd like to actually pull out item D.
Okay.
I don't really understand what this, I read this earlier and I didn't quite get what's happening.
Get a second on that, and then we can discuss it and explain it.
Didn't anybody make a motion?
I did not.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Ron moves to approve the consent agenda, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Chuck seconds it. All right, discussion.
Point of order, I think that if we're pulling out an item, we have to vote individually on each item now. I'm not trying to be a-
We'll shoot it down.
I'm not trying to complicate things, I just, I really want to know what exactly is going on with this.
We'll shoot it down when you have a motion and a second, and then make the changes. Mr. Laird, can you lighten the board on the item D on the consent agenda, the acknowledgement of retirement compensation adjustment?
Sure. So back in late 2019, staff approached the board for a survivor benefits package. It was a clause within the current defined benefits plan. The current board at that time, they approved it and things went forward. It was to staff's understanding that the percentage of the employee contribution would go up from 3% to 3.75. That was incorrect. It should have never been raised from 3%, but because of that error, three staff members paid 3.75% between January of 2020 and December of 2021. When we realized the error had occurred, we reached out to our PSATs, our plan administrator, and they advised the easiest way to fix it, because it was after tax contribution,
Yeah.
was to write them as if it was just a refund out of general, and they're going to move that extra money to the township contribution side.
Okay, so PSATs is reimbursing their part?
We are, the township will, because they, that's already in, the contributions are already in the plan, and the paperwork's already been filed. They'd have to go back and change all that paperwork. They said it's easier just to make the minor switch on their end, the extra 0.75% is going to go to the township side, then the employees are going to get back their money.
Okay. I think I understand.
So they, oh, they-
Yeah, I get they overpaid, and that's fine, and they deserve their money back, it's just, I want to make sure that, that PS, when we collected these monies out of their payroll, I'm assuming we forwarded that to PSATs?
Correct.
So PSATs is returning that amount to us, correct? We're not stuck in the middle with having paid twice, right?
No, what it'll be is they're just going to move it over, and most likely, a future payment will be a smidge lower.
Okay, it'll be lower in the amount of this?
Right, it may not show that exact amount because you pay the MMO every, which there's a formula to that.
Okay, but do me a favor and just, you know, really keep an eye to make sure that that happens.
We'll do, yep.
So I mean, it's not, it's a, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a really significant amount of money, it's just sometimes large organizations like that, if they make mistakes with this township and that township and that township, and then eventually they all add up, and next thing you know, they're making a lot of money when it's like skimming. I'm not accusing PSATs of doing that intentionally, but, you know, it's, we do need to protect ourselves, so. But thank you, thanks for the explanation.
Okay. Mr. Strauss, do you still want to have it withdrawn, or?
No. And then, I've had questions about the other one too, but that's, it's-
That's okay, we're here.
The E, but it's $53 for something that-
Brett, can you give the board a light moment on the E?
Double assessment, yeah. No, I understand this one now, looking at it reminded myself, so, yeah, okay, never mind. I guess we're good.
And again, it's $53, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Before we move on, I would just like to thank Mr. Frank Kishvari and Marshall, Mr. Marshall Maring for your service to the township. So if you're out there watching, I thank you on behalf of the board.
Thank you. We'll move on to old business. Update on administrative offices, move back to 100 Municipal Lane. I believe I will defer to Mr. Servello for this one.
My favorite project. Been working on this for quite a while now, as Amy and Brett would attest. I, where we are right now is I'm getting some quotes on demountable wall office furnishings that we, I believe we need. One of the things that I found out was, or that I learned in this process is none of the desks have locks on them, most of the files don't have locks on them. So we can't put locks on them because the manufacturer of the files is out of business, and it's cold, and to put a piano hinge type lock system on them, I think would probably end up costing just as much as a file cabinet. So what I did was, did an assessment of what all's needed, went to McCartney's in Altoona, they're a stillcase, Han, they're a supplier with a lot of big manufacturers. They are a participant in the Co-Stars program, which is a state discount program that we're registered with and can take advantage of those discounts. So I'm still in the process of getting some pricing. I'm looking at the mechanical system itself. There's a little bit, there's two heat pumps in this building. I'm in the building, so, there's one out here and one that supplies the other side. And they were installed somewhere around 2019, manufacturer date was February of 2019. And the distribution of that, of the air over there is for a large, one large area, one open area. So now that we're putting a private office in, I have to redistribute the air a little bit, we would have to do that. I'm looking into what that takes and how much that would cost. When I have that price together, then I'll have a full, a full summary of an estimated price to do everything. So that's where that stands. And speaking of those, these heat pump units, they're three, going on three years old, probably. I don't have much of a background with them, can't find any information on the units themselves, nor can I find any record documents for this whole renovation project. We're still looking, staff is still looking. One thing I know for sure is these two heat pump units need to be serviced. They haven't been serviced since they were installed. I know there's air filters in them, and I think what we need to do is we need to find, well, I actually did find some authorized contractors for REEM heat pump systems that I think we ought to reach out to and get some pricing to, for, I think there's two listed in the REEM, on the REEM website. We ought to contact them and see what their price would be. They should probably be serviced twice a year, replacing the filters, checking the, you know, the fan unit, the compressor unit, making sure that they're kept running properly. They're, I'm sure they're expensive units. And we want to, we don't want to lose, we don't want them to fail. So I think we need to get them serviced. It's probably, you know, $1,500 a year to service both units, could be less. I have no exact idea what it would cost, but I think that's something that we need to do. So they've never received any kind of service. In terms of the process, there is a process because if you, if you build any kind of full-height wall, anything over six foot high, six-foot-high walls require submittals to code administration, submittals by a registered professional. And there's a series of forms that have to be completed. I met with the code inspector last week. We looked at the facility, the room over here. It is in full compliance from an ADA standpoint. There's not a problem with getting a partial change of use. The only thing in this whole building that does not comply with ADA is the keypad on the front door to come in. And it broke, it's broken, it's no longer functional, has to be replaced. When it gets replaced, it will be replaced, it has to be replaced. It'll be replaced with a new keypad that is accessible, that is the proper height. The top key of a keypad can't be any higher than 48 inches. And I think that is 54 inches to the top keypad, to the top key. So it has to be replaced anyhow, so when we do it, we'll do it so that it's accessible from somebody with, in a wheelchair. So it's fully ADA compliant, and then the entire building will be ADA compliant. So there's no hurdle there, I checked with the zoning officer, there's no zoning requirements for zoning permit or any change there. And, but, the submittal to code requires a registered professional, and the plan, whether simple or complicated, needs to be stamped. So what I offered to do a couple, a few weeks ago, for free, as a volunteer, is to complete this process and coordinate the process, including the move, the acquisition of all the materials that we need to do the work. Of course, once I come up with a total cost, that's something that needs to be presented to the board for approval. It's not something I'm going to do unilaterally, nor have I been given any authority to do such. So I'll put together the plan with the costs. If the board approves it, then I'll proceed with submittals to code administration for partial change of use permit. I'll work with staff to work through the vendor, the Co-Stars authorized vendor, to purchase the equipment that we need and its installation, and I'll coordinate the move at, you know, at the proper time when we know for sure that the, that we have everything in place. Now, another aspect of this is data, and we have a quote that was gotten for us through, actually through the Borough, their IT department, and that's about approximately $4,500. And when you break it down, there's 18 Cat 6 wires installed in the wall. They'll cut boxes into the wall, drop the wires into the wall, do a neat job, bring all the wires into a rack in order to route the communications, you know, as necessary. And for $4,500, you divide it by 18 wires, it's about $250 a wire, which is a pretty standard price for something like that. So it falls well with, well below the threshold requiring competitive pricing. So that's another component of this. If I, just for the heck of it, I brought my credentials with me in case somebody's wondering if I'm a registered professional. There it is, right there. So I've been registered as an engineer in Pennsylvania since March of 1985. And I think we should be able to have everything together, possibly for the next meeting on the 28th. I'll present a plan. And it'll have pricing so that everybody will know what it would cost. Now, the alternative to doing this, of course, is for me, is for the township to hire an outside professional, architect, whatever, do a design, submit that to code for approval. We can construct, we can do renovation, construct offices, but I can assure you that this plan, I estimate, my approach, I estimate to be $25,000 to $28,000 total, including the move. If you go to an outside professional and you do construction work, I can tell you it's probably going to be more like $75,000 to $100,000. Now, this is my, this has been my profession for a long time, and I can assure you those numbers are accurate. So you'll see the, my version of the plan, and then the board can make their decision when I, after I present it. Did you want to ask, do you want anybody to?
I got a question.
Okay.
You said that you talked to the IT people at State College Borough.
Well, they provided the quote for the Cat 6 data.
I was going to say, are they going to come out and install it, or would it be a contractor?
That's an installed cost. $4,500 is an installed cost.
That's everything.
Yep.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is the Borough employees coming out to do it? Because if it's another municipality, we don't have to bid it.
It would be, no, it's a, it's a vendor that they work with.
Okay.
And I'm trying to find-
I didn't know if their IT department had installers, so.
No, this is, I got it here somewhere. Let me find it. It's called Expert Communications, this is a quote, I did check and the quote's still current. This is, this was submitted by Chris Gray of Expert Communications to Craig Bowser at the Borough State College. So they do work for the Borough all the time. In fact, they're authorized to work for the university, and I'm sure that the university probably does use them quite a bit. But my experience with Cat 6 wiring is it's a decent price.
I know it's not cheap.
And with inflation, as it, inflation, with inflation the way it is, you know, in six months, this price could go up considerably, or even, even a month from now. So the sooner we do this, the better, but I realize that, you know, we're going to have, I mean, there's late times to get the furnishings too, the demountable wall system as well, and address the air distribution. We need to make some ductwork changes and diffuser changes, which is actually a relatively minor job. So it's a matter of air distribution and balancing the air, go ahead.
Are you able to stamp it too, or is you just?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what that is.
I know that was, you know, an engineer, was a-
Yep. It's, let me just put it, and that's a good question. To put it into perspective, you know, we had a proposal by an architect. The proposal for the design work and construction management was over $9,000. So it gives you an idea of the value. I would prefer to just do this because there's no construction involved, there is furniture installation primarily. Uh, and very little in the way of um liability or. You know, any complexity involved with that, any risk. So it's, it's a uh, it's an easy job. And what's nice about the demountable wall systems is it's something you can take down as easily as you put up. You can move them. So if you wanna make a change in the future, it can be done.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stroud.
Ron, I have no doubt that you're a good engineer. Um, I'm not saying any, anything I'm about to say as accusatorial or anything to that effect. Okay, but just hear me out. The reason why we are supervisors is, and we should contract these types of jobs out and not do them ourselves. Is because this starts to approach the line of. At least giving a. Um, appearance of potential impropriety. The idea is you use independent contractors or an architect in this um example. Would be to separate us from the people doing the work. Because we are too close to being able to make decisions that could potentially benefit ourselves. And that's why the proper way to go about this would be to hire an outside professional. To give a professional of design and opinion and. It, it's the reason why those steps are in place is to pr- protect the municipality and taxpayers from the. Potential of corruption. Again, I am not accusing you at all of having that intention. And it, please don't mistake that. It's just, that's the reason why we are in these chairs rather than out working in the. On the roads and things to that extent. So.
Well, remember.
I mean, it's just, it's just. I feel uncomfortable with this scenario with you coordinating all this work. Because who's not to say, two or three or five years from now, this board has a different makeup. And some of the people on the board have some more nefarious intentions, and they're gonna take what you've done as an example of how they can. Get themselves close enough to that line to where they can step over it without people noticing. So you have to protect the board from itself in the future. Um, and also just, uh, uh, you're, I'm, I'm gonna object, object to one thing you said, that your estimate of it was gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars. I think you, you have to be careful saying that because we don't have an actual estimate, so let's pump the brakes on that. We don't know what that cost would be. So, but um. But it's your estimate not from an outside professional, which is what you were trying to quote would be. So if you want an estimate from an outside professional, I would love to get one.
Well, I, let me, let me ask you a question. What do you want, do you want me to withdraw from, from consideration of this? Is that what you're asking?
Personally, yes, because I think it, I think it just, it's too close to being potentially improper. And that's my objections again.
You know, that's a legal judgment, Bob. And frankly, when it, when you talk about walking the line, okay, you're skirting the line. You're, you're using words like impropriety, using words like nefarious, uh, corruption. To refer, you're referring to a registered professional. I have a code of ethics that I've had since nineteen eighty-five. That supersedes anything that I do here as a supervisor. I'm a volunteer, and I think that Zach clarified that point the last time. Now, I'm, you know, whatever the board's will is, the board's will will be done. Let me put it that way.
Ron, did you miss the part where I said, don't take this personally?
Until you start talking, using words like impropriety, like nefarious, like corruption, you know. I did, I offered my services as a volunteer. I ma- I have no vested, no financial interest in this whatsoever. In fact, it's been a lot of work for me to do this. I'm willing to do it. I'm doing it for the township. However, if it's, if it's going to be a problem in this township, then I guess, you know, maybe we can't do it this way. But I'm gonna tell you something. I'm gonna vote to do it because it saves the people of this township a lot of money.
Mr. Chair, you have a.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please come up to the.
Sure. I just would like to say, listening to this, you, Mr. Strauss, made it very clear of your intention, was nothing personal. Listening to your response, you took it very personally. From my observation, I just wanna be clear about that.
Okay.
And that's concerning. Um, I thought it was a very well uh pointed. Uh, uh, I, not really inquiry, but statement about the concerns about what we would be getting ourselves into. And I think it's, it's something that, that should be considered.
If I may.
Mm-hmm.
At the last meeting, when Zach Rice was attending the meeting, this issue came up. As a potential conflict of interest, uh, as an issue of, of, of ethics. And I thought he did a pretty good job of clarifying, clarifying that. Now, we can ask him to do that again tonight. Is he attending yet?
He is. But I would like to just be clear, that's not, that's not my point.
Well, my point is this has already been covered in the previous meeting.
I am dealing with a sinus infection, so I can kind of barely speak, but I, I could speak to this issue if you would like.
Please go ahead, Mr. Zach.
No, I, I, I don't think, as I stated at the last meeting, I, I, there's not a, there's not an outright prohibition here or, or an outright conflict of interest. If, if what we're talking about is volunteering for services, there's no, there's no, there's no compensation. That is the trigger under the State Ethics Act that uh, that creates conflicts of interest. Um, now, Bob raises some good points about the appearance of things, and that, that's something to be cognizant of as well. Um, as far as the liability goes, i- if Ron is contemplating utilizing his, you know, engineering field like anyone else. That, that's a liability concern largely that um, you know, you know, that, that falls back on him. So. That, that's sort of my take on the, the issues of the conflict of interest and the liability. And I, again, I apologize if you can't really make out what I'm saying, because I can kind of barely speak.
You sound fine.
We, we got you, Zach. We hear you.
Okay.
No, thank you, Thomas.
He doesn't have a video.
Anything to add? Else to add?
No, just, just again, I think that my comment was not taken in the manner that, or the spirit that I made it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please go up and have a seat.
I just wanted to thank Ron for, for stepping up. But Mr. Strauss, it sounds like you're of the school of. If there's a pile of trash in a public road in front of your house, and if you're able-bodied to pick it up, you won't pick it up. Because it's a conflict of interest you wanna bid for somebody to pick it up.
In fact, I'll be out doing the uh road cleanup with Clearwater Conservancy, so.
Then it's just, I, 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 I think if somebody's willing to volunteer and step up to do something. If there's no conflict of interest, it shouldn't be accusatory.
I was not being accusatory, but I'm trying to protect the township.
I think he's talking precedence.
Exactly. The, the problem is we start setting precedents for different things and. Slowly, things become muddied into gray areas where it becomes hard to see the light, so to speak.
Okay.
And I am not, I am not at all accusing anyone of this board of trying to do that at the moment. I'm not saying anyone sitting here would do that. But again, boards change. So five years from now, we could have a completely set different people here. And they could potentially look at something that was. I'm gonna say. Done this way. As a precedent to maybe taking another step closer to that line of impropriety. If you, if that makes sense. Again, I, nothing personal to Ron. It's just, I just feel like there are certain processes in place for a municipality of this size. That we sh- that should be followed to protect us from ourselves, so to speak.
Okay, but I look at it as a municipality of this size isn't that big. We should be thankful for people. Volunteering their expertise in any field, whether, whether you're a truck driver, whether you can, like I said, pick up trash on a road or.
But again, it becomes an issue when you're a sitting supervisor and then, I, I don't know, it's just. I, I, I said what I had to say, so.
Thank you.
Actually, I wanna just uh, thank you for providing a role model of what it means to volunteer, which is what I heard you say. So I don't know how anyone could see this setting a precedent, except someone doing their civic duty and volunteering. I find actually the offense of, your statements offensive. Thank you for volunteering.
Please, folks.
All right, well, we're probably not gonna resolve anything tonight.
No, I just wanted to present where I was.
I appreciate it. And I assume you'll be back at the next meeting with the uh, the overall scope of, of work.
Put together a final plan, approach. It's not a final plan till the board approves it.
Right.
So I'll show you what I got. And you can see for yourself.
Sounds good.
That's what I promised I would do, that's what I'll do. And we can make a decision from there.
Okay. Move on to the next topic. Um, discussion on job description for Roadmaster?
Well, again, uh, as I understand it, Chuck and I were tasked with reviewing the job description for the Roadmaster. I've been looking at that and made some comments on the job description. I wanna give that to Chuck so he can look at this as well and provide his comments. And we could put our, put that together and present something to the board. Okay. But Chuck really hasn't had the opportunity to look at it yet, so. All it is, is some handwritten comments. I'll pass it on to you, and you can do your, you know, do your thing and. Bring it back here together and we can look at it. It's just a recommendation.
May I?
Yes, Mr. Stroud.
Amy, do we currently have this position advertised?
What's the Roadmaster position?
The position description was never finalized. There was a revised descri- description that was in draft. It was never completed. And I personally think that we need to. We need to have a Roadmaster, what amounts to a Roadmaster. Um, and it's the pre- the original, not the original, but the previous version was pretty good. Uh, I can understand wanting to add a few technical aspects to it, uh, in terms of use of. You know, being able to, to send email, to be able to complete reports. But um, I think it's something we need to take a look at, just to make sure that it's gonna work. And we'll make recommendations to the board, and the board can review and, and do whatever we all collectively decide to do. That was the plan anyhow. It's gonna take some time though to, for us to, to do that. Hopefully, though, between now and the next meeting, we can have a recommendation for the board. And then shortly thereafter, get it posted.
So we're gonna go two full months after this meeting. Before we even advertise for the Roadmaster position.
What's the time period after we have an agreement on a, a, a job description to?
We could advertise the next day.
Okay, then that's what we ought to do. If we can get an approval on the twenty-eighth, which is it?
We can send that in the next day.
And get it on, get it out there as soon as possible. You have a question?
Yes.
I just have a quick question related to the Roadmaster, because we also do not have any full-time road crew at all, correct?
That's correct.
And is that process in place to review those applicants, or are those on hold until we hire the Roadmaster?
No, I, I can address that. Um, there are stacked resumes here for the road crew. It doesn't mean that the road crew person, whoever that is, might not become the Roadmaster. But we are looking at getting some people on board and, and as soon as possible.
Okay, so the, the road crew is moving forward before we post the Roadmaster?
The position for a public works laborer has been posted twice now.
Right.
The applications are for the public works laborer. So we have to screen those, which I spent some time also in the past two weeks screening the applications. To narrow them down so that I could make a recommendation to the board and how many people I think, I think qualified. And we can interview as many as we want. You know, so that, but this is something that any one of us could screen those same applicants. There's forty-nine applications. I've narrowed it down to eleven. Uh, six from the first posting and five from the sec- six from the second posting and five from the first posting. The board can review them as they wish, but we need to coordinate a time to interview candidates, contact them, set up interviews. And see if we can come up with a, a candidate. We do only have one position approved for hiring. The board has never voted to approve the hiring of two full-time positions. There's only one, and there's only one budgeted for. So, uh, what I thought the plan would be. Is to, in addition to hiring a full-time public works laborer, is to have a, a pull of. Um, seasonal workers to fill in the gaps. We've got summer projects coming up. This, this is aside from the major paving projects that we've approved. One being Orchard Road, the other one being Doe Drive. Uh, we did not approve the Paul's Lane.
Not for this year.
Repair, repaving. Uh, I think something needs to be done there, it needs to be done soon. We'll talk about that at a later date, but I think we, we're gonna need to make a repair there. We're not gonna have any Paul's Lane left because that pipe's half out of the ground now. And then we gotta do some rock riprap down along Smith Road to prevent the erosion from continuing to occur, the washouts to continue, that continue to occur. But um, so we need people on board to do these summer in-house work projects. They are, they've been scheduled already for this summer. And so we need to get on the ball and get crew in here. Good. Now, there's the position of the manager, and from my own, my own standpoint. Other board members are gonna disagree or have different ideas. But that position, I believe, cannot be posted until the job description. The ordinance and the personnel manual are revised and corrected. There are some serious errors there, serious issues. That I think the board needs to discuss. And so, uh, and we can't hire a position until it's posted and advertised.
Ron, can I request that you. Highlight the issues you have with those three documents?
Yep, absolutely.
Send them out to us in an email this week, please.
This week? I'm not, you mean this week?
I would, I would appreciate.
It's not gonna happen this week. It can maybe happen next week. I've been working on it.
You sound like you've already read through the entire thing, so.
There are some thi- yes, I will do the best I can to get them out as soon as possible to all five board members.
I think it's imperative that we do that on an accelerated basis, because currently we do not have a manager. And currently, the work of the manager is being performed by staff who already has jobs. So I think it's, we, we need a manager. We also need a Roadmaster, and we need these positions filled. So we need to stop slow-walking this stuff, and we really need to get on the ball here and.
I wouldn't call it slow-walking, Bob. I wouldn't exactly call it slow-walking, but that's your opinion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Has everyone reviewed the forty-nine?
No, I just got them tonight to take a look at them myself.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I went through them completely. Now they've gotta pass them.
You said that, I'm just curious, a lot of noise, but not seeing a lot of action from everybody, so.
That would have been the ju-
Excuse me. I have the floor. Uh, that's sort of the question I would have. You're all elected to work, so I think you better step it up, to use your phrase, and quicken, quicken.
Thank you.
Well, may I?
Go ahead, Mr. Strauss.
The review of the applicants had initially been done by our previous manager. We didn't just receive these applicants. Now, to to your point, no, I have not reviewed the applicants. But I have been working on trying to get our fire department funded. I do attend several of the COG committees or a member. So I'm not sitting on my hands. I I do work for the township, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, now let's move on to new business here. Discussion and possible decision on keypad replacements to meet ADA standards. Current keypad is not compliant. I guess we have a quote.
And it's broken.
Yep, it yeah, it needs to be replaced, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to get it fixed and and repair it at a proper ADA.
Before we do that, do we have the price, the cost?
Yeah, we need quotes in the agenda here.
It's not, it's not a lot of money.
There you go, Bob.
There it is.
Not cheap?
They aren't cheap. And that's an outdoor keypad.
Is this the kind that can be accessed via the network and that type of thing? Or is this just straight key punch?
I believe it's just straight.
Straight key punch. I'm just curious.
To do a network access, this is what was put on the building. It's a battery-powered keypad. To do a network access, you're going to you're involved with a new jam and door. You you have to wire it. It's got to be connected to the network. And for the amount of use that it gets, I hardly think that it's it's something we can think about in the future.
Again, it was I was just curious as all. My question is, the door itself has have we had a locksmith out or whoever gave us this quote? Have they actually looked at our door and?
It's Hoodco.
We can.
Whoever, the company changed names, but it's the same company that installed the door with the keypad the first time.
Okay.
It it used to be called Hoodco.
Yeah.
So so we're not looking at a door replacement is what I'm driving on. They're not going to come to us, hey, look, by the way, if you've bought this, now the door doesn't work out either, so, you know.
Fortunately not, but it's an exterior lock system, too. In other words, it can withstand the weather, and that's what we need to have out there. The one inside, we have another one on at the office. That's an interior keypad system. It's a cipher lock system. So that's not, that doesn't have to be as robust as an exterior unit. I think we probably ought to consider at some future point putting some kind of an awning or something over the entrance to protect the entrance. And also, if you're standing there trying to get in, you know, and it's pouring down rain, you don't have to stand in the rain to do it either. But that's something we can take up in the future. But that pad doesn't work now, and we just simply have to replace it, so.
Can entertain a motion.
So moved.
Just a real quick question, just because on the quote, it doesn't say that this is going to be ADA compliant for the required height, so hopefully you guys have that written somewhere.
It is, it's in the.
It goes to that expense.
Transferable email of the quote. That's the first thing I asked.
Yeah, because it's not on here.
Thank you. We got a motion from Mr. Strauss. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Vello seconded. Any discussion? What is the favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right. Discussion and possible decision on Comcast bandwidth memo. And Mr. Strauss, this is your area of expertise, if you'd care to enlighten us.
Well, put me on the spot, I didn't think I'd present on this one. Bear with me. In layman's terms, the troubles we've been having with the Zoom the last several meetings was because we've had a lot of attendees via Zoom the last several meetings. There's only so much bandwidth in this building. Bandwidth works like plumbing is the best way to describe it. The smaller the pipe, the less can get through is at at the speed you want it to go through. So I've recommended that we increase our bandwidth. What are we paying for currently?
The two hundred.
The two hundred, yeah.
Which price do you look at there, Brett?
For now, we're still in the two-year promo. So the one oh eight forty.
And that's for here, not the office?
Actually, it's in one lump bill now. We went to a hierarchy billing system just a few months ago.
So it's here and the office?
E- each place will be one oh eight forty-four here.
Each place, okay.
The maintenance building.
They don't offer, because you're a multi-building municipality, they don't have any kind of?
They got rid of all those with the last franchise agreement on that one.
Man, that stinks. Good old Comcast. I mean, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have to have the same speed for all three, or can they be different?
No, they could be different.
They could be different.
That's a good point. My recommendation, because I'm a tech guy, and I mean, at home, I I have the one gigabit service, and it's it's almost flawless. You never have interruptions. Unless there's a neighborhood interruption or whatnot, and we run multiple televisions, multiple gadgets all at once, everything works great. Is that necessary here? I mean, it would solve our problems, but it's a two hundred and thirty nine dollar price tag, so it's a hundred and hundred and thirty bucks more than we're currently paying. So is it worth that to us for two meetings a month? I mean, we have to have the bandwidth to support CNET and the Zoom feed, but it's not a contract if we were to shift something, correct? You can change speeds at any time.
You can, except it is treated like a contract, so if you see that note each time we would change, we'd have to pay sixty-nine ninety-five.
Gotcha, okay, but that is a one-time charge, too. So, I mean, obviously, the two hundred megabits per second is not doing it. I would propose, just to try and be frugal, is see if six hundred megabits per second fixes our issue because you could always go back and increase it then again to the one gigabit. But again, that's a pretty good price tag there, so, you know, just trying to keep the taxpayer's money in mind.
I would like, I have a question.
Okay.
Is CNET an issue with regard to the two hundred Mbps service? Are we having a problem with CNET?
What do you mean?
With the current speed that we have.
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought the only issue we had was with Zoom.
Yeah, it's Zoom that's having the issues.
And frankly, I'm not sure, and I I don't, I don't, not saying we shouldn't increase the speed some somewhat, but I'm not sure that to have the idea that to perpetually have a large number of people, especially people asking questions, attending and having a trend, having an exchange, a conversation with people on Zoom over the long term, is the best idea either. I think what I'm what I'm trying to say is it's hard to have a dialogue with someone on Zoom. If they're not in a room and if someone's going to have a serious issue and they want to bring it to the board, I think because there are no more restrictions for attending meetings, I think they should have to bring them here because I want to see the person that I'm talking to. I want to be able to identify them, know who they are, and I think that's only fair, and that's that goes both ways. So I'm not sure how much attendance by Zoom we're going to continue to have that's that's effective is what, that's my concern. I'm not making a judgment here, I'm just stating a concern.
I got a question.
I just want to mention, though, look at all the troubles Zach has at the meeting. So are you going to bring him here physically for your meeting?
We're trying not to.
Yeah, that's going to cost a lot more.
I know, but if if you don't handle Zoom, you won't be able to handle all the interruptions he's had to deal with.
What I'm saying is it 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 gets, it degrades the most when there's a large number of people attending by Zoom. Okay, I think some people have to attend by Zoom, and I think that's okay. If whatever we have to do to accommodate that, we should. That's my opinion. But I would prefer, what my own statement is, I prefer if people would attend the, come to the meeting if they can, if they have a concern or a serious issue or a question, something that we can intelligently discuss face to face. And it's hard for me to talk to somebody that's on a screen that's that big. That's all I'm saying. And I don't know how effective that is. I'm not saying, not talking about people watching or attending, you know, watching the the meeting, but when you start getting into dialogue and you, especially the chats, and I think Zach would comment, would probably comment on the chat part of it, that that becomes very disruptive. And I, you know, there, in other words, I'm not saying it's that there's no room, there's no place for Zoom. I'm saying I think maybe there's a better way to manage Zoom. But let, you know, if if speed is going, if the 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 network speed is going to be a problem unless we increase the speed, then by all means, increase the speed. That's all I guess. I'm a little concerned about it, that part of it. I'm sorry.
Ms. Day, are you, is that answer your question?
Well, I just want to echo echo with.
Well, I got a gentleman over here that'll.
She had said, and then, and I do, I I agree with Bob that I think we should go to six hundred, and I also agree with Ron in terms of, that's a whole nother conversation for another day in terms of handling Zoom differently. I think there is a place for it, but I also agree with you in terms of having conversation. If people want to have a complaint or an issue or a concern, they should come here, I agree. But it is beneficial to have Zach. So even though we're going to continue to use it, I would support Bob's idea of six hundred.
Yes, sir.
I I was wondering, I'm assuming that once you relocate back here, that there will be a separate charge up there.
Correct.
So, and there's, you're going to save a hundred and some dollars on that one.
Yeah.
Maybe you can just delay this till you move, and then then you up it, you have to up your costs.
Yeah, I think because most of this board, well, I know myself, I'll speak for myself. I don't know that much about computer speeds as far as transmitting information over a line. And since that's Mr. Strauss's wheelhouse, I will take his recommendation and and when do you think we should make the change, or do you think we should try it sooner and see what happens?
We should do it sooner. I like, I appreciate your comments about trying to stretch it out. But I think what we need to do is just give it a shot. And one, see if it fixes our issues and.
I guess we'll know pretty quick.
Yeah, we will know pretty quick. And then, you know, if if Ron's plan of having the neighboring space finished rapidly, we're probably only in for fifty or, you know, a couple, a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars, because that's about the price difference here. Excuse me, eighty dollars from what we're paying. But again, it's 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 not that much, and we have had a lot of attendance. So we really need to support and to the, yeah, and there's that. There's folks, not just folks on the board, folks, residents who travel and want to attend the meeting because they might have an agenda topic that they couldn't, they can't make the meeting because they're they're away on business or that kind of thing.
Well, that's always possible.
You know, we have to have that avenue because it is the year two thousand twenty-two and, you know.
Let me get the lady in the back here.
In the interest of time, I'm, I'll send some comments, but my question is about funding.
Can you state your name?
Oh, I'm Peggy Majeski.
Okay.
You said that there's a sixty-nine dollar charge every time you change the service? And that's in each location?
That's how it's explained to me.
So so you could change the location, the service in one location, one time, and and everything else could stay the same because it's not necessary to up that?
Correct.
That would be a hope, yeah.
That, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not that much, right?
Yeah, we're not proposing going to that greater speed at the other building while we're still there. There's no need for it.
Right.
It's just this location here because we've had so many problems with Zoom. And 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 as pointed out, even if we don't have a highly attended meeting, we want to make sure that at least our solicitor, you know, can be heard from audibly. And, you know, so we can make out what he has to say, so.
Well. Is it really a Zoom, is it really a bandwidth to this building problem, or is it a Zoom problem? Because universally, people make fun of Zoom and all the all the dropouts.
I kind of thought that, too, but I use Zoom professionally quite a bit. And in in the the bank buildings that I work in, we have some meetings that are fifty and sixty and seventy people, and we don't have these these type of issues. I don't know what bandwidth we run our buildings at, the the line that comes in, but it's obviously really stable, and and I know we use Comcast. So, you know, it kind of doing the math, it says if we up our bandwidth, it'll probably fix our problems, so.
All right, well, would somebody like to make a motion to?
I'll move that we approach Comcast about increasing the speed in this building to six hundred megabits per second at the earliest date possible.
I can get in touch with them tomorrow.
Thanks, Brett.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Going to call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Let us know, staff, how it works when they before the meeting starts. See if you see it, notice the difference.
Is there some way to test it? Okay.
We could, actually. Yeah, just to get a bunch of us together and, you know, let's have a five-minute test meeting.
See what's it. Before you actually have a meeting.
Next, next item up on the agenda is discussion and decision on Robiotics subscription renewal. There's a memo in there. Robiotics is a company that has gone around and they photographed all the township roads. We have a visual record of all the township roads. And you, they can do it every year, they can store the data, or if we decide we don't want it anymore, then they just drop it and we lose the data. Just for discussion purposes, I I think it's useful to have a timeline and and have the information. I don't know that we need to do it every year because I don't think the roads blow apart every year, and I think we are very conscious of what kind of condition the roads are in.
There's only so many of them in this township.
Yep.
I don't think it's something we have to do every year.
Yes.
Not just pictures, they they also, there's a rating scale that helps us to also prioritize the what needs to be moved down.
It's not a good service, I'm just.
Yeah, I think it's been a real good service because it it helps. So it's just a matter of, so we can keep the existing data but not perform a new assessment for six hundred and twenty-five. And then when we want to run a new assessment, if we decide every three or every four years, then it's the twenty-five hundred.
Right.
Is that correct?
Now.
And when was this for, last, Ron? It's been like two years though now, hasn't it, since they actually did it?
Is it twenty twenty?
I'm honestly not sure because when I ran it the first time, he said that there was an issue, and so they ran it again, and I'm not sure.
I mean, certainly, you know, just for discussion purposes, probably no more than five years, we'd want to. It does give us an advantage, too, like if there's a lumber company comes in, they're going to haul out a bunch of trees, they have to post bond on the road. We will have evidence of what the road condition is, the complete road. So it is a good thing. It's just that it's a lot of money for every year. But we don't want to lose the old data because, you know, if we have to go back and say, well, in twenty twenty, it was this way, and twenty twenty-five, you know, the whole thing just blew apart, and then the question is why and and what happened, so.
I'm going to ask a, an obvious question, I'm sure I know the answer to, but just to clarify. As far as keeping the the data for six hundred and twenty-five dollars, it means we also still have access to the program itself and.
That's my understanding.
It's the scaling and everything. And we could change inputs or do whatever, okay.
So basically, it's like a six hundred and twenty-five dollars a year service charge to just continue the service, okay. I don't think you're right. I mean, re-scanning the roads every year is probably excessive. I I would propose every three years. Three years is a reasonable amount of time for a road to go from okay to not okay. You know, especially with the 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 weather and what we do to our roads. So, yeah, I mean.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion to take action on it?
I'll move that we renew our robotics contract for the keeping our current data at six hundred and twenty-five dollars a year.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Patty made the motion, Bob seconded. Any discussion by the board? Discussion by the audience. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Discussion on mowing contracted mowing services. We have a quote for mowing. Brett was nice enough to put down our our. Um, we have a, a quote for mowing. Uh, Brett was nice enough to put down our, our cost, not including employees' holidays and that kind of stuff. But I think given this year, just my personal opinion, uh, where we're at with the road crew, it probably would be wise to get a contracted service out there as soon as possible. Um, there is a, there is a, uh, bid or estimate quote in your packet. If anybody feels otherwise.
This is for A-plus collegiate.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, the quote's on the next sheet there.
Um, the only thing, I have to ask this because of, you know, legal, but Zach, are you, uh, there available for a question?
Yes, I'm, I'm still here, Bob.
Um, knowing the owner of A-plus collegiate, uh, workforce is our, uh, sitting, uh, Port Matilda Fire Company Chief, uh, I just need to pose the question, there's no conflict of interest here, correct?
No, no, because he, he's not an elected official. He's.
Okay.
He's just a, you know, a, a member of an agency with whom you are affiliated.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed to know. Uh, again, just doesn't hurt to ask just to make sure.
This covers us for mowing services for two thousand twenty-two?
Yes.
And is there any other service aside from mowing?
They trim as well.
Okay.
It's just a one, they charge on a weekly, um, service fee, so it's trimming and mowing.
Okay.
Of all our facilities.
All right.
Was there only one? We had one proposal?
There was not. There was two. Um, the one that we presented to you fell below the threshold. The other one was in it. Um, therefore, we would have had to go through the three written or phone quotes, so it kind of negated that.
We've discussed in the past about contracting this out anyways, that this would be a smart way to go.
Yeah, sure. Should, my concern was, um.
Do I hear a motion to go with, uh, A-plus?
So moved.
Patty made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ron seconded. Any discussion?
Just have a question.
Yes, sir.
For Nauman, um, there was an offer from the Center Little League, folks to do the maintenance for the ball fields. Was that taken into account in this bid? Or has there been action or consideration for, uh, partnership with them to do the ball fields?
I'll let Mr. Savella fill in on that because he was meeting with the ball field people.
Uh, that's actually, we got to kind of figure that separate. That's, what we're, what we're, I think, going to do as a board eventually is to have a contract with State College of Little League, wherein we, we define what each entity does. What the township will do in terms of maintenance and what the Little League will do. They offered, they offered financial, uh, resources as well as labor resources. You know, there, it, there's, there's, certainly a contract is required, but also there's issues of liability, release from liability, things like that, indemnification. And that's something that, there was a contract in two thousand fifteen that was drafted by State College of Little League, but it was never signed. There was never an agreement between the township and State College of Little League. That's my understanding of that. Is that, is that correct, Amy?
There was one drafted that was not signed yet.
Right. So that was dated two thousand fifteen. That's going to be the basis from the Little League standpoint of what they would like to, our solicitor to review. And they would come up with a contract that both parties can live with. And then that would define the maintenance responsibilities on each side. But we certainly, I think personally, that it's important for us to take advantage of the resources that they're offering to help maintain those fields. You know, and there's always limits to what we can allow them to do too. So that's something we got to figure out. And Amy's going to play a pivotal role as well because she's got more experience in, in, in the, the relationship between, you know, from a maintenance standpoint between the Little League and the township. So, well, we're going to have to work on that to come up with an agreement that both parties.
My question was, is, was that taken into consideration with State College of Little League was willing to perform maintenance of the ball fields in coordinating with the cost of doing this mowing work for the township and the bid received for that? I didn't know if that was in, you know, taken into consideration, if they're going to mow the area around the ball fields and the outfield.
Right.
You know, that would be something that we would need to pay for in a contract basis with another provider. I didn't know if that was thought into the process.
Well, I think probably in the back of our minds, you know, we've been perhaps thinking about that. But, uh, as far as the contract to mow the grass, you know, I don't think a contract with the Little League to decide who does what and what we can save in terms of what they're willing to do enters into this particular contract. We're simply trying to get somebody on board to cut the grass because it's grown and we're going to need to cut it. And you got a good point. I think eventually we'll work that out. And then we'll be able to define the parameters, the, the scope of work for each party. And that'll help us define how much mowing we have to do as township and how much, what the Little League's willing to do. So I'm not quite sure that I understand the whole, you know, the whole scope of that job, so. Uh, I was just trying to help facilitate getting the Little League contract to our solicitor so that he can review it and come up with a, a draft contract that we can make work for both parties. And, you know, we, we always have to, we should always be primarily concerned with the, the interests of the township. So that's where, you know, that's, that's our duty.
The grass will be mowed.
Right, but there was just an angle of.
It's an absolutely good point.
Last meeting, and I was curious if there was consideration for what would be done by another entity that would save the township money, um, for part of the park's maintenance.
Right. I would say that's, should be in the future. That should be taken into consideration absolutely. And to, to limit, wherever we can limit the scope of our work, we should do that.
If it's on an hourly basis, figured out what they know they can mow per hour.
It can save us money. Right.
Just a question.
Right, absolutely. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second on the table. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. So collegiate A-plus workforce or A-plus collegiate workforce, however it is, they are in. We'll give them a try. All right, discussion and possible decision, part-time and seasonal public work and works employees. Okay, um, currently, as many of you know, um, we don't have any full-time people. We have some part-time workers. Um, reason why I wanted this on the agenda is because anybody that's out there right now knows fifteen dollars an hour is not sufficient to attract people for, uh, part-time, the CDL driver especially. And I'm just kind of throwing some ideas out there, but I think if we could get some other part-time people to assist our, whoever ends up being a full-time employee and then our roadmaster, I think it'd be good. Uh, in the past, we've been short on having flaggers and other people to run equipment and keep an eye on things. It's, it's a dangerous place out on the road. So if our new roadmaster, whoever he or she ends up being, can call on some part-time people to come in and help, you know, a couple of days a week, I think that would be a good thing.
Or even as, on an as-needed basis.
Well, on an as-needed basis and especially in snow season and, you know, drivers get tired. Uh, people need to be able to shift it around, be, you know, shift around a little bit. Um, but anyways, my thought was that we would raise the, uh, CDL driver part-time. Now, this is not a non-CDL person. This is a CDL person, the twenty-five an hour. And I don't know if the board has any feelings on that or not. And also I wanted to let you know that, uh, I talked to Scott Brown and he is willing to come back and help on a part-time basis. And I would suggest we pay him, uh, thirty an hour for coming back. He's willing to come back and plow. He also has a professional spray, a specialized spray license to spray along the roads and take care of road maintenance. And, uh, he is willing to train and help train the new roadmaster and road crew. And I think that's a very big thing for us is having somebody with experience and knowledge, you know, know where all the tools and equipment are. So we'll just put that out for discussion on the board.
On a point of clarification, Dave, we're talking about seasonal employees, right?
That is correct.
As-needed, part-time employees.
That is correct. It is not a permanent position for Mr. Brown to come back, but he is willing to come back and train the new people. And assist with snow plowing.
So what does that mean for our current two part-time folks?
Well, they would get a raise if they have a CDL.
Do they have CDLs?
Far as I know.
They do, yes.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, this.
I want to speak out of turn, but I'm pretty sure they did.
And do we have a cap on what part-time is? How many hours per week?
Um, Brett can give you the policy information.
Patty, there's, there's technically two different kinds of part-time. There's part-time permanent, which was more like, um, if you remember Hassel-Froxx's position.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's part-time seasonal.
Mm-hmm.
Seasonal, there's not an actual cap. As long as you keep them under the part-time hours of pretty much thirty-five. You have to keep them less than thirty-five because then you get into insurance purposes. Generally, they're two to three days a week if they ever use that often. But there's nothing that specifies currently, no, not in the township aspect.
I think it's important to have flexibility. Right now, we don't have a crew. When we have a crew, we certainly would not, and, and after they're somewhat oriented to the job, we certainly don't want to be using seasonal employees thirty hours a week. Now, there could come a point, we have summer projects. I referred to that earlier, I believe.
Yep.
We have summer projects, uh, that are in-house, that were scheduled to be done in-house. Well, we don't have an in-house right now, so we're, but those projects need to be done, especially stormwater drainage, washouts, things like that. I've read a lot of, gotten information from a lot of people. Um, I've seen the washouts for myself. I took a ride with, uh, Jim showed me the roads. Uh, want to get familiar with all the roads and, uh, that the stormwater did do some washout damage. And Jim's the, really the only seasonal person right now that's, that's actually making repairs. So I think some things are getting done. Uh, we should always focus on the priorities. But I think it's a good idea to have a pool of people available. It's always good to have a pool of people available. That's my perspective on it.
Uh, I guess since we don't have a manager and we don't have a roadmaster, who makes the call of what's needed when then? And what's needed is rather than just what people want to do, when they want to do it?
I'm just going to throw this out there because the board hasn't voted to put anybody in charge. But I think if we have Mr. Brown come back to train the new people, he could certainly handle those duties until we find a, a permanent replacement, full-time replacement. I mean, nobody knows the roads better than him. I mean, love them or hate them or whatever the case may be, he knows the roads and he knows the equipment, which is something that anybody new walking in here is not going to have that experience. I mean, they might be familiar with a truck, but they're not going to necessarily be familiar with our trucks, how they're set up. Cause there's all different kinds of plow mechanisms. There's all different kinds of truck, dump truck mechanisms. There's all different kinds of equipment out there. And just because you can run a John Deere doesn't mean you can run a Case, so.
Um, I'm going to say what needs to be said. This is leading down the road of being tremendously improper. Scott Brown stepped down, which triggered the attempted firing of our previous manager twice. And then she resigned. And now suddenly we are bringing Scott Brown back on to staff. Um, and Mr. Chair, you said earlier, you think that the eventual roadmaster could possibly be someone from staff. So if we're talking about bringing Scott back, and again, this is no, nothing personal against Scott. I like Scott. And I, I, I'd like to see him back on. I'd like to have him not have left. I wouldn't like to, none of this mess to have happened. But it's just, again, we are walking down that road of giving the serious appearance of something was very awry with how all this went down.
I want to just alleviate your fear. Mr. Brown is going to stay at his current job, but he's willing to come back and help with the snow plowing and orient the new people. He has no intention of coming back to be a regular employee.
I appreciate that.
I, I had that conversation with him, um, just to see what his feelings were and, uh, I understand your concern. But I think, you know, if he does come back and help out a bit, uh, one of the things he did say to me is he has a lot of relatives in the township. And he says he feels like he would let them down if the snow plowing didn't occur and some of the other stuff.
Sure.
And I, and I know he has strong.
So.
Strong feelings in that regard. And I don't, you know, I, I will let you know right now, I have no intention of hiring Mr. Brown as a full-time employee. But I think he lends experience and training abilities for new crew people that I don't think we should pass up the opportunity for.
Thank you.
Who will be then managing Scott?
Well, that will be anybody that this board so designates.
Or the board as a whole. Oh, we can, we can appoint someone as a board. We can appoint someone with, with the duty of, if they choo- choose to accept it, to, you know, lend a hand to the staff to help supervise that process as a manager. Not as a, not as a regular manager, but just to help coordinate the work.
I think just as long as we're aware of what jobs are being done.
And to report. Reporting.
Yeah, but this is summary and, and, you know, or the hours.
I think we need to be have, be very careful about the amount of hours we're using, about.
It's just like the thing with contracted employee. You want to know that, what they're doing.
Yep. And I, I think there's, unless Chuck would not, would object to accepting that responsibility. Chuck's an experienced, uh, uh, road contractor. Uh, understands road maintenance, road construction. Um, and equipment use. Chuck, do you, you want to comment on that? What do you think?
As long as it's not a full-time thing, yeah, I can help oversee things until everybody gets in place. We get a new manager, we get a new roadmaster or whatever.
I guess what I should ask is are you willing to do something?
Yeah, I, I mean, I travel the township every day. I'm always on the road, going somewhere, doing something. You know, if I see something, then I come back and maybe talk to Amy and say, hey, this might need to be addressed or whatever. I mean, if that's, if that's what you're asking.
And keeping track, maybe the, you know, have a way of reporting the number of hours worked, trying, trying to somehow manage or place a limit on that.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
So.
I think we can.
And report to the board.
Very much keep a tight limit on hours of our part-time people. And I know poor Jim back there, he's knocked himself out trying to.
You ain't going to get many hours out of me right now. Pretty well beat up.
Yeah, he's, he's done an outstanding job as a one-man band, but it's, it's not fair to him. And I, I don't know what Scott's hours would be like, but I, you know, if we have a couple of part-time people, you know, and then they can call on them. And if one person gets tired, the next person could roll in. And just to have one of the supervisors just be the person that Scott would report to, and I don't care who it is. I really don't. It's just as long as we're getting stuff done. And, and especially with the big rainstorm we had and the washouts and that kind of stuff. And like I said, Jim did, did great work out there, you know, getting after things and, and, uh, I can't run a backhoe. So I'm not, I'm not even, I don't even begin to be qualified on that. I can run a shovel. You call me when there's a shovel. So, but other than that, I mean, you know, that, somebody can run the grader, somebody can run that. I mean, somebody has to be trained how to do those things. So if we hire.
We still do have Mike, right?
Is Mike still available or what, what's his status?
Pretty busy with, uh.
He's.
Amron.
He is still an employee. He stayed on, but he's going to be more, um, wintertime. But he will still be around.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's working with Amron a lot.
You know, if we had six people on the part-time list that were CDL drivers and they only drove in the wintertime, it would still be a good thing to have. And, and if they get a free week in the summertime and they want to help out, that, you know, at least we can call on them.
So what are you looking for, Dave?
Well, I'm looking for, I guess a couple of things. One, we need to establish a supervisor that Scott would answer to if we're going to hire Scott as a part-time person for training and spraying and, and equipment operation. And then I'd like to raise the, the wage for the other CDL drivers to twenty-five an hour so we can attract other CDL drivers. You know, I come walking out of Sheets the other day, and I won't go through it again, but you know, there's that, a lot more money than we're paying standing behind the counter running the cash register. And running that snow plow is no fun. It's absolutely no fun. It's cold, it's miserable, things freeze up. It is just a rotten job. And to pay fifteen an hour is just not fair. The people are doing it. And I, and I know Jim's probably doing it mostly not because of the money, but because of the, it's the community. And that's what Mike Fedora said, and that's what Scott Brown said. You know, but I'd like to, like to hire Scott at thirty an hour. Because he has his spray license. To oversee the stuff and train everybody and handle spraying and those kind of things that he would normally do, but it's just going to be on a part-time basis.
Right.
And then twenty-five an hour for anybody else with a CDL.
I think what we need here is separate motions for separate things.
Well, I'm just saying, this is my.
Yeah, but that's, that's, I'll move that, before I do. I'm always a proponent for the employees and higher wages. As a supervisor worrying about the municipality and budgets, I have to comment that ordinarily, I would have to object to this steep of a raise without doing some sort of research because of, are we blowing our budget, that kind of thing? But knowing we haven't had anybody on staff for several months, we're obviously not going to be blowing the budget this year. So I have no objections to that. So I will move that we raise the, and correct me if I say this wrong. I will move that we raise the minimum wage for our CDL licensed.
Part-time.
Part-time employees to twenty-five dollars an hour.
Do I hear a second?
Do we need an effective date on that?
Well, you could put one on it or it could be immediately.
Effective April, April fifteenth.
Well, how does the payroll run?
Yeah, that, that, yeah, what's the paysite?
Yeah, May first would work.
Yeah, okay, let's say May first.
Starting May first.
Sure.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second. Any discussion by the board? Concerns or discussion by the audience? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved.
We still need a motion for someone to coordinate.
Well, we, if we're going to hire Mr. Brown to do his spray thing and the other stuff, we need to do that. And we also need, going to need a motion to appoint somebody to oversee these people to make sure it doesn't get out of control. Not much out of control you can get fixing the roads, but we'll stay focused on the roads. Do I hear a motion to bring Mr. Brown onboard temporary part-time and do training at thirty an hour?
I'll move that we bring Scott on as a seasonal part-time employee to oversee the road maintenance, the training of the crew, to act as a temporary road, some, have some of the roadmaster duties. I'll make that motion.
That.
At thirty dollars an hour.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion is set and a second. Is there any discussion? Discussion by the audience. Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Strauss opposed, the others aye. All right, Mr. Brown is temporary part-time. Okay, now we need to appoint an elected official or someone to oversee what Mr. Brown and company are working on. Anybody want to make a motion to appoint somebody, or do we want to talk about it?
I think we need to have somebody that's willing to do it first. And Chuck, you've pretty much said you'd be willing to do that, right? I mean, you could certainly get assistance from any one of us.
Right.
As you need.
Well, like I said, report back to the board. This is what's going on, this is where the hours are at.
Kind of keep track of them. Okay.
I have a, again, I want to consult our solicitor. Zach, please. And again, this is just trying to protect ourselves. I have no doubts you can supervise the, the crew. It's just I want to make sure we're not putting ourselves in a legal pinch. Zach, is there any type of conflict of interest or any reason that a sitting supervisor should not be named the direct report to our part-time road crew employees? Can't hear you, Zach.
I think his, his call may be dropped, he's not up there anymore.
Can you guys hear me?
There we go. Did you get my question?
No, the answer is no.
Okay.
In a number of, in a number of smaller townships, it's actually quite common that a supervisor serves actually as the roadmaster. So there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be any prohibition against this.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure because I know there. Yeah, I'm sorry, Zach. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to make sure just because I know there is, there are specific rules about being a supervisor and a manager at the same time. So I wanted to make sure we're not sticking our neck out where we shouldn't be.
No, no, and like I said, the second-class township code actually would permit a supervisor serving as the roadmaster. And then there's, there's certain hoops that would have to get jumped through, jumped through as far as compensation. I know we're not talking about that here, but I re-raise that as a indication that the code wouldn't, would not prohibit what you guys are contemplating.
Sure.
You know, it certainly would be fine too, to have a member of the staff to sort of oversee these folks. But no, the short answer is no, there would be no prohibition against asking one of the supervisors to sort of oversee the situation.
Good. Thank you, Zach.
And do you want to clarify, should we clarify that, that we're not talking about additional compensation? Is that correct? Right.
Your supervisor's pay.
Right. So there's no additional compensation.
No, it's just a report.
Is, in question is what my point was.
Okay. Next item. Discussion on future board of supervisors meeting.
Yeah, we need to vote.
I'll make a motion to appoint, we appoint Chuck to oversee the activities of the roadmaster and the crew as necessary. And to report to the board as necessary, the amount of work and to, you know, basically oversee or supervise the activity, the number of hours, et cetera.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ron made the motion, Bob seconded it. Any discussion? Discussion from the audience? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
I guess officially Chuck would have had to abstain from that vote?
No, because there's no money.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I sustain from it anyway.
Yeah, that's why I didn't hear you.
Okay. Next item. Discussion on future board of supervisors meeting workflow.
That was my idea. What I mean by that is I think that we as a board need more time together in a public meeting to have a work session where we discuss the work that we want to complete. It's a public meeting, anybody can attend. Where the first meeting, what I propose is the first meeting of the month would be that work session. Followed by, two weeks later, or by the second, was the fourth.
Second or fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday of the month, we would then have a regular supervisor meeting. And the reason, I go back to the, the work session, is that would be the basis for an agenda for the second meeting. Whatever comes out of that work session could be the primary basis for an agenda. Other agenda items can be added. But I think it would be more efficient for us to do it that way so that we can have time together to actually work out what we want to accomplish. Hash it out, you know, whatever agreements or disagreements there are, we work it out. That way, when we come to the meeting in the fourth Thursday of the month, we're basically taking actions or voting on motions or making motions, that kind of thing. And I can see that be much more streamlined and it'd be more efficient. That gives us time to work together, and we're not trying to do both at each public meeting. That's what I was proposing. I talked to the solicitor about it as well, just to see if that was even something that we could do. I think, Zach, you want to weigh in on that, Zach? We had discussed that.
Sure, sure, I can, I can get in on that, yep. And it's, it's not uncommon for municipalities, a lot of places just have one meeting a month. But I know of a number of townships that I represent where they have two meetings, but they, they try to structure them such as, along the lines of what Ron just described, where the first meeting is essentially the, the meeting where you get into the weeds and you get into the nuts and bolts of, of your various issues and typically prepare things for action at the second meeting, which is going to be more of your, your sort of.
Did we lose him?
We need him extra megabits per second.
Yeah, I thought we voted to have the extra bandwidth. Where is it?
We lost you, Zach.
We generally, unless, unless necessary from a timing standpoint, aren't intending on, on taking action. But we can kind of prepare things for the next meeting so it can be a bit more streamlined. And we'll have had the opportunity as a group, you know, as, as supervisors, to really dive into the issues and get a chance for a robust dialogue and a back and forth. And then at that point, you go to the next meeting and it's ready for, for action one way or the other. So it is something I've seen successful. Certainly, however, the board wants to structure its, its meetings is, is up to the board. But that, that's my, sort of in my experience with groups, that now it's important to mention, and I think Ron did reference that. It just, it's still a public meeting, and just calling it a workshop doesn't alleviate or eliminate the need to comply with the Sunshine Law and whatnot. It would still be advertised as any other meeting. But you would convey to the public, like, this is sort of our, this is our, our workshop meeting where we're going to get our hands dirty. And then in two weeks, we're going to have a lot of things ironed out to take action on. And I'll say too, and Ron kind of mentioned the agenda, and I know over the month, there, you know, there's been discussion about the agenda and how to structure it and kind of who has the authority to set things on the agenda. Using this format, I think it's the best way to ensure that the board as a group is maintaining its, its authority over what it wants on its agenda and what, or how it wants the agenda to be structured. So generally, at your workshop meeting, you go through the number of issues that you have on the table in front of you, and then you would, you would work with staff to say this is, these are the things that we want on the agenda for the next meeting. That way, the, the agenda can still be a sort of board-driven decision, or what's on the agenda can be a board-driven decision, and staff can essentially carry out that, that directive for you.
Thank you, Zach.
Discussion by the board.
Yes, no problem.
I'd have no objections to doing something like that. We do have to keep in mind that that first meeting might, there may be some action, time-sensitive action items that we might have to address here or there. But yeah, if we just, for an agenda for that said meeting, the first meeting of the month, the agenda could just be whatever pressing issues right at the top, and then after that, it's work session. Would we need to at least have like bullet points of the topics that we think we would be covering in those work sessions though? Because I think.
I think you're going to have to.
Yeah, because you're going to have to have the public want to know.
Oh, like an outline, like a structure. You don't want it unstructured or it's going to.
Right, but it would be very.
No, I think we need to have structure.
Well, it would be open to maybe a greater variety of topics because we're not constrained with paying the bills or.
Yeah, but we don't want to go on and on too. We have to figure out, you know, what are the most important and what do we want to get out of it and then go through.
Well, Bob and I were talking beforehand with, with Ron and about, you know, fire company's going to be a big issue for us. And I think how we approach that, want to set up a committee. I mean, you know, how, what are our goals? What are we willing to do? What do we think we need to do? Who do we need to bring in? I think some of that stuff, the board has to discuss.
Right.
Well, and the other thing, as you brought it up, Bob, there, there are going to be cases where we have to have a public hearing, we have to have a redevelopment review, subdivision review, that's time, things that are time-sensitive. That can be handled at either meeting, regardless of whether it's a work session or a regular supervisor meeting. But they're both public. And I just thought it would be more efficient to be able to do it that way.
I don't mind trying it, but it, it seems, because that's normally what we do, like at the beginning of the year, we would do our strategy, and then out of the whole strategic stuff, then everything falls out for the year. To me, it seems, once a month seems like a lot, but I think maybe for where we are now, it would be okay to try. But then I think we should be open to then not having, maybe then it's once a quarter or whatever, once we get things.
I think if everybody picks a topic that we're maybe first and foremost that we're concerned with, we can just sort of go through Amy and say, hey, this is, you know, I'm really concerned about fire department. I'll just throw that out there, because I think we all are. So that might be the topic of the discussion for most of the meeting, and maybe we end up having to pay the electric bill because it wasn't on the meeting thing or whatever. But, you know, if we could pick one topic or two topics and concentrate on that, I, I think it would give us a, a better chance to see where everybody's coming from and, and, you know, get the ideas out there.
Or, for example, we're going through it, we're going through applications, job postings, applications. We sit down, we have that time to work on those, to look at them over, decide what we want to do. And, you know, interview process, who we're going to interview, because we can do that, and I think.
I think we have to be careful there because of, it's personnel issues, so, you know, we're talking about an open meeting. So if we're going over applications, I think that has to be done in an executive session.
Do it in an executive session.
But that could also take place at the work session as well because.
Time to work together.
It wouldn't interrupt the.
No, I don't disagree, and I, I kind of do like the idea, but I think we also need to be open to, you know, when we do hire a manager, if they have another idea of how they want to try. You know, we need to be open to other ideas, but if this will work for us now with the folks we have in the room.
It could change in the future, Bob.
What's that?
It could change in the future.
Yeah, exactly. You know, it's not anything that would be written in stone, but at least it would give us an opportunity to hash out some things. And just as you pointed out, Dave, boy, I have a lot to talk about as far as the fire department goes. So, you know, there are discussions, difficult discussions on the fu, in the future here regarding the fire department, and they need to start being had so no one can claim that they're being caught flat-footed, so.
So if, if we're generally okay with that, I don't think we need a motion, but we will just go with that theme for the, for next month.
That's just.
The meetings are already advertised.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to advertise anything any different, but I just wanted to make sure the, the board was onboard, so to speak. And I think at our next meeting, we're going to have, going to have a pretty full agenda with some subdivision stuff.
Yeah, this would start in May.
Yeah, this would be next month.
Twenty-eighth meeting is going to be chock-full of things, so. I think.
All right, well, let's get down to, we're okay with that. Let's get down to department reports. Anything, Brett, you want to throw anything out there, or is it all?
No, but it's all standard stuff.
Okay. And they're available online, I take it?
Yeah.
If anybody, I figured that.
Via the links in the agenda for anyone watching. Yeah, I looked through them earlier today. I, standard, paying the bills.
All right, and get down to supervisors' reports.
I'll start. I had Cog Facilities and Cog Finance so far this month. In facilities, we have, now have a groundbreaking is starting on Whitehall Road, Regional Park. And we also, Millbrook Marsh Phase Two, the education building is starting, and we have a project manager hired to manage both of those projects and work through our facilities coordinator on those. So it's pretty exciting. After twenty years, Whitehall Regional Park is.
Finally starting.
Now starting, it's in process. So, and then there was discussion about both those projects also at the finance committee, and we're working on some new budgeting practices for finance. And that's all I have, and there was no open space board this month. Last month.
Bob?
I'm going to use my time to talk about the fire department. Been working pretty closely with these guys for several months now on their budgets and their financial situation. And I am unhappy to report that their financial situation is. situation. And I'm unhappy to report that their financial situation is quite dire and has been for a very long time. We've, and I'm, this isn't just Half Moon Township. Port Matilda Fire Company supports the five-member municipalities of the Upper Bald Eagle, Half Moon Valley cog. We are the big boys on that municipality. We're the township with, for lack of better terms, the most wealth. So we obviously pay the biggest price tag toward the fire company. Currently, and for however many years, the fire company has been funded, it has received enough funds from the municipalities to run their day-to-day operations and their annual operations. However, their capital purchases are, they are way behind. Currently, they're two, basically a year and a half behind on capital purchases. I don't have handy exactly the things they need, but I do have it. It's, but the dollar amount is the problem. They need to catch up on the things they did, the equipment that they did not buy last year. Now, remember, these are life-saving equipment. These are apparatus to keep themselves safe. These are generators, you know, just things that they use in the rescues that either have become so old that they can't be fixed anymore, can't be fixed properly. You can't find parts for them, that kind of thing. And those items need to be replaced. And then you have other items that are mandated by the state or the federal government to replace every X amount of years, like the breathing apparatuses that the firefighters wear. I do believe their lifespan is five years and once it's done, even if that thing is working perfectly, in your opinion or in their opinion, it has to be replaced. Currently, I think we need two. Over the course of the next five years, we need, I think, six of those. And they go for, off the top of my head, I'm trying to remember from the conversation we had yesterday, they go for somewhere around 10 or, no, excuse me, it was $16,000 a piece. Those are just some of the things that the fire company needs and they just don't have the money for. They're currently, they had a wish list every year and every year they get close to it between their fundraising efforts and, you know, penny pinching on their operating budget to try and save toward their capital purchases and that type of thing. But last year, being COVID, they didn't come to any of the municipalities with their hat in their hand, asking for money as they normally do because of COVID. They realized that all the municipalities were struggling financially because of the lower tax revenue and so they didn't ask. But the problem is they still need those pieces of equipment. So you combine that, I think it was 50, no, $35,000 worth of equipment last year they didn't even ask for, that they need. And then this year, the total list would have been 55,000, but anyway, combined between the two lists of capital purchases that they need to make, they need an additional $83,743 just to get them caught up. I am not proposing Half Moon Township ponies up all those funds. We currently have a formula between the five member municipalities of the Upper Half Moon, Upper Bald Eagle, Half Moon Valley cog that works out where Half Moon, this is the, Brett, I'm sorry, this was the formula that we worked out the.
Workers' compensation.
Working compensation. But this, this really kind of simplifies how, you know, the contributions that each municipality gives. Anyway, Half Moon Township would give 34% of that. And I'm going to approach, I have not approached them yet. I've opened the conversation, but I have not asked for numbers on, from these. But Houston Township would be 28%. Worth Township would be 17%. Port Matilda Borough would be 13%. Taylor Township would be 8%. And that would get them to that 100% funding goal of that $83,700. That would mean Half Moon Township would be paying $28,472. That would be their share, their 34% share. The next one would be Houston Township at $23,500-ish. My proposal would be right now that we, from our ARPA money, which we currently have $150,000 from, from the federal government for the American Rescue Plan Act, that is not spoken for, that we, from that money, we give Port Matilda Fire Company the $28,000 toward their capital purchase. Now, that doesn't get them to the 83,000, but at least it lets me go back to the other municipalities and say, hey, guys, we paid this. How about you help us out? Because it's their fire company too. It's just as important to them as it is to us because it fires indiscriminate, it doesn't care what township it's in. It would help me have a little leverage to nudge these guys along to contribute their share. I have had preliminary conversations on this topic with those folks over at our last Bald Eagle cog meeting. And it was, the conversation was accepted with, eh, lukewarm because we're talking about spending money. I understand that. And especially these municipalities, they don't have a whole lot of money. But again, we have to figure out how to do this some way, somehow. And if we were to put forth our part, then it might be easier for me to then convince the other municipalities to do the same with their percentage. I was going to work with John Witherite, Port Matilda Fire Chief, and actually attend the meetings of Houston, Worth, Port Matilda Borough and Taylor Township over the next month-ish to try and lobby for them and convince the, those other municipalities boards that they need to get on board and get Port Matilda Fire Company up to speed as far as their capital purchases. And then, a conversation needs to be had, and I don't even want to have this conversation, but I need to say it, that we need to figure out how to get these guys better funded on a consistent basis so they can then have their capital purchases as needed without having to beg for money from the municipalities, without having to beg for money from fireman's release, without having to spend the little bit of free time these firefighters have fundraising because they're already, you know, fighting fires and training to fight fires. And there's a lot of training that goes along with this stuff. So whether that would mean, dare I say, the third rail of politics, raising taxes, I don't know. Would that mean restructuring the budget going into next year to, you know, take money from one place to another? Currently, we have a fire tax of 1.7 mils. Throwing around loose numbers, neither I or John Witherite are financial specialists, but we do understand how to make a budget. And he, we came up with the idea that in the future, if Port Matilda Fire Company was funded with a 2.2 mils tax rate, like a dedicated tax like we have, that's currently 1.7 mils, that, that's, that would, they would need that 2.2 mils from all the municipalities. And it's, it's a hard sell because we actually pay at the highest rate as well. So again, I'm not proposing any kind of tax hike or anything like that, at least at this point. But I just, it's a, it's something we have to start thinking about because our fire company is really, really, really struggling. And I will also go into the fact that our EMS service is also struggling mightily. So if you have, you know, if you haven't already, please, you know, send your donations to the, both the Port Matilda Fire Company and the EMTs. And thank you. Absolutely. Give, give more than they're asking for, please. Double it if you have the means, you know, because these are the folks who keep us safe and they save our lives, they save our children's lives, they save our parents' lives when there are emergencies. We ask them to run into burning buildings on a volunteer basis. They need the equipment that they need to stay safe and do the job that we're asking them to do. Anyway, I'll get off my soapbox about the fire company, but.
Sounds like a work session.
Yeah, there's a lot to talk about. You know, if we do a work session with, about the fire department, I would make sure at least John's here with us. I think I would also invite, and I'm not sure if he would be willing to participate because he's no longer a sitting supervisor, but Bob Berg of, I want to say Worth Township, Houston, okay, thank you. He's really good with their financials and he was kind of overseeing them for years, but he finally decided that it was time for him to step away from local politics. So election happened and he's no longer in place, but he may be willing to come over and spend an afternoon to talk to us about, one, how they got in such dire straits and two, how we can possibly get out of it. You know, I'm sorry, one more thing, I almost forgot. What we were talking about before the meeting, one of the big issues we have over with the fire company is the pumper truck is 23 years old and it is, it's struggling. It's getting hard to find parts for it. It's, seems like we're dumping 20, $25,000 a year into it to keep it serviceable. It goes out of service often because when something breaks, it has to go in for repairs, which sometimes takes weeks. So now you're down an engine and which is critical when there's a fire or a horrible accident up on the highway, which is the majority of their calls actually. The fire trucks are not cheap. They generally run between 800,000 and a million dollars. But this is also something that would be, the cost would be shared in theory. Again, this is starting a conversation. The cost would be shared between the five-member municipalities of the Bald Eagle cog. So the municipalities that are in that coverage area would have to go into a long-term financing agreement, I think, to then, you finance the, you do the length of the financing for the estimated lifespan of the truck. So if you're looking to get 25 years out of the truck, the hope is you can get 20, 25-year financing. So you spread out that tremendous cost. And that's another conversation, again, that we're going to have to unfortunately have because, you know, aging equipment, it doesn't get any younger. And that's where we are right now. So, yeah, sorry to be so long-winded, but yeah, it's something I'm passionate about is making sure those guys are taken care of. So.
Mr. Schivello?
I, I attended the land use and community infrastructure meeting. They talked about changing the format of their planning, but there wasn't, there weren't any specific actions at that meeting. It went fairly quickly. The public safety, I'm on the public safety committee as well. That meeting was canceled. And next week, we have a meeting of the open space preservation five-year review committee at 2:00 PM. And then the planning commission, which I'm not a member of that, but I will be attending. So it's a pretty significant issue.
Planning commission meeting?
That's it. I think it's at 6:00 PM. Is that right, Amy?
Yes, it is.
And the open space preservation five-year review committee is at 2:00 PM.
Busy day. And you also attended the cog general forum.
Oh, yeah.
I know because I saw you there.
Dave and I attended the cog general forum meeting. And that also, that meeting also went pretty quickly too.
That was a quick one.
So.
You missed all the fun ones about Whitehall Road Regional Park a couple of months ago.
I think it was a record. All right. Chuck, you didn't get any of them things. So, anything for the good and welfare of the board?
I have something. Of course, the folks at, the staff at cog prepared cog-specific information for Half Moon Township. And Amy, I don't know, has this been posted to the website or is it available? Is it out here?
I have a stack of them right there. But yes, if we could have that posted to the website, that would be awesome. Maybe up to, on the township Facebook page as well.
Because I know we've been getting a lot of questions about cog and cog participation and benefits. So this is a nice summary, just focusing on Half Moon Township that the public has been asking for. So they provided that for us. So we have copies here and then Amy, you'll post it to the web. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks Patty. You know, I actually thought Eric was coming to present that. Since he's not here, I kind of forgot.
Chuck, do you have anything for the good and welfare? You've got this new responsibility. You what? Bob, anything to add? Ron, you got anything to add? I don't have anything to add. So.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I will just reiterate that we are having, since there were possibly some folks who weren't in the room at the time, we are having a roadside cleanup day through the Clearwater Conservancy organization. And we will have the information on how to volunteer for that on our website as well. Please, Amy, while you're writing. On the website and Facebook page so it can be shared around because we know how much everybody loves to do that social media thing. So, but yes, I would encourage everyone to come out and help out with that. We can get our township looking pretty again and.
Oh, I can read the statements. So, first day falls on April 22nd every year. And celebrate on the days surrounding the holiday through events that protect our planet from pollution and deforestation. The eighth Half Moon Inclusion and Diversity Alliance HIDA will be participating in the 26th Annual Clearwater Conservancy Event on April 23rd.
Yes, thank you.
From 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM as multiple groups in the township who have and continue to participate annually. So both groups will be, township will be along the 550. So drive carefully, slowly.
Yes, because there might be some younger folks out there helping out. So please be careful on the roads on, as always, but on April 23rd.
And then this one is one of the popular event for the Boy Scouts. And there will be some Eagle Scouts running with the trash. So be mindful. And then our HIDA group will be on Smith Road between Malcolm and Charlotte Street, including Autumn Meadow Park. So if anyone is interested in participating, feel free to contact Clearwater Conservancy to register for the event and be matched with the group. I will also post a reminder to sign up on the relevant township groups on Facebook only next week as a last reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I forgot to mention the date. You cleaned it up for me. Thank you very much.
Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. I do not see Ms. Squire here tonight.
I don't think they have anything this evening.
Alright. Moving on, I guess we're down to adjournments. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to the adjournment.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting closes 9:00. Thank you very much.